All right, if we can get started, kind of a special meeting tonight. I know there's a budget meeting after this. Appreciate everyone being here. We'll dispense with the prayer tonight, call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Branch, Bray.
Here.
Costalis.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussy.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Scrivener.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
If it suits the council, understand that there could be discussion of Bill 2014-66, which would be 3B. Is there a motion on the floor to amend the agenda to that?
I move to amend the agenda to add Bill Number 2014-66 as Item 3B.
And that was seconded by Mr. Prather. Any other changes to the, to our first meeting tonight? Seeing none, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. At this point in time, I'll call in our city administrator to give us a brief description of what we're looking at tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you tonight is consideration, my recommendation for the appointment of Mr. Bill Betts as the combined position of Director of Finance and Information Technology. In addition to the combining of those positions, there are some supporting personnel position that need to have some adjustments made to those, and that's the subject of the bill. But the first item is the appointment of Mr. Betts as Director of Finance and Information Technology. As you know, Mr. Betts has been in the interim position for a little over a year, has had the opportunity to go through some challenging budget opportunity, and has been through several audits, and has the opportunity to work on several rather sophisticated plans related to our capital improvements, multi-year financing plans, and some things like that. So I've been very pleased with Mr. Betts' performance, and I will leave it open for any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions? Steve, we can probably answer those or ask those if we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Scrivener.
Mr. Mayor, I want to move that we approve the city administrator's recommendation of Bill Betts to serve as Finance Director and ITS Director with implementation of city administrator recommended reclassifications and related salary adjustments.
I second that.
Seconded by Mr. Henry. Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion. Rick.
Steve, could you give us the financial impact of this decision?
In regard to the 2014 budget, with all the positions, with the pluses there, it amounts to approximately a savings of a little over $109,000. And for the 2015 budget, it amounts to a savings compared to what was at least in the proposed budget of about $104,603.
And next. Any other discussion on the recommended motion that's before us?
Just a quick comment. I want to, I don't know if commend's the right word or not, but I want to say that I am very much in support of the administrator's recommendation. I've observed Bill, Mr. Betts, over the past time that he's served as interim, observed him even before that as he served the city in his capacity as IT Director. He's a fine manager, he's a dedicated employee, and our, the reports and the information that we receive, we receive it on a timely basis, it is thorough. I don't think we could do better than approving this recommendation. So that would be my endorsement.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments on the motion before us? Mr. Graham.
Certainly, I don't want to take up too much time, but certainly I want to echo the words of Councilman Scrivener. As someone who serves on the Finance Committee, certainly the reports are always detailed, fully thought up.
Thought out.
And certainly, there's never an issue. Whenever we ask for explanation of something, it's always there. So I fully support this recommendation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other discussion on the motion before us? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
As Jack Buck would say, that's a winner. Bill, congratulations. Bill's the guy behind the curtain. You can't see him if you're watching TV right now. Well deserved, and Bill, happy belated birthday. Which was yesterday, right? Okay. Next, we'll have first reading of Bill 2014-66.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2013-2014 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by personnel schedule changes within finance and information technology departments.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to ask to suspend the rules since we've already made the appointment? Is it necessary? Let me ask.
We would have to suspend the rules in order to do that.
If we're going to vote tonight.
If you want, if you want to make that motion, now would be the time to do it.
I was just looking at Steve. He had indicated before, and he'd like to wrap it all up tonight, so there's no loose ends.
Okay, then I, then I move that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Is that a voice vote?
There's two objections, we don't.
Okay. Are there two objections to suspending the rules tonight on 2014-66, dealing with information technologies and the like? Seeing none, we'll officially suspend the rules and have third reading, please.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2013-2014 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by personnel schedule changes within finance and information technology departments.
Okay. Steve, would you like to tell us more?
This bill essentially adjusts the reporting relationship and salaries of two people, moves the systems analyst to an information technology manager, and accountant to senior accountant. The way that I envision this happening, and they're only, these are for existing positions, and the only way it works is to have those existing people move into those higher level positions. Due to their experience and the rationale for these adjustments is due to the additional work and the additional skills required. Then there's a, another adjustment that does not involve an increase in grade. Open for any questions.
Questions of our administrator on 2014-66. Debate by council. Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Motion passes, 10-0. That will conclude tonight's meeting with a motion from Mr. Bray.
I move to adjourn.
For a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next up will be the budget continuation
of those meetings with Budget Chairman Ralph Bray. And we'll just keep the mics and everything hot. Thank you.
Branch.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Costalis.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussy.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Scrivener.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
And, Mr. Betts, is there an order that we're going to follow here, about these items? We have three remaining items on the mic list.
We'd like to go ahead and do the Parks and Recreation Department first, if we can, and then from there, we'll talk about the thing, items behind tab number six, which are the special revenue funds there. And then we'll find, the last thing of the night would be the sales tax F cash flow in that budget for sales tax F.
All right. Item number, so we'll start with Parks tonight. Mr. Lockwood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we start, I'd like to introduce to you Steve Duncan, our commission immediate past president, Marty Miller, our current Vice President, and they're here to answer any questions you might have this evening, along with myself. Just to kind of recap, our overall budget process, the commission began looking at our budget back in May, along with all the other departments, and approved a budget that was submitted to the city administrator in early June, and worked through the process along with the other, other budgets. Some of the highlights that I'd like to hit on is a balanced budget. Again, revenue and expense wise, it was presented to you and adopted by the commission. And you've heard a lot of this before, but it does contain money for the 2% pay increase, which you all are still considering. It also provides for a 10% increase in health insurance costs, the same as other departments, reflects a 1% reduction in loggers' retirement contributions, has a 6% increase in sewer rates overall, and provides for revival of our spring competitive youth softball program, and the creation of a new day camp program to relieve some of our overloaded current programs. It also continues our stewardship program with a modest vehicle and equipment replacement program, which I think our pink sheets were included in the documentation that you have before you. And it also contributes $300,000 toward our multipurpose building fund goal during the next capital, our next fiscal year. There really, there are no major changes in facility or program operating schedules. I put before you at your place this evening our latest program guide, so you can kind of see, at least for six months of the year, what this budget helps to support. And finally, it also maintains our current permanent staffing level with no increases. Overall, it's about $142,000 or 2.1% reduction over the budget approved by the council last fiscal year, for the, for the current fiscal year. And I'd be happy at this point to answer any questions that you do have. That's kind of a brief highlight of our process.
Did you repeat that number, the reduction?
$141,995, or about 2.1% less than the budget you approved for us last year.
Thanks. Other questions of Mr. Lockwood? Mr. Mahalovich.
Could you let me know what's happened to your forestry fund? I know that's been kind of going thin, and we depend on that to, for some removal of some trees and right of ways and such, and can you speak to that?
I think in the budget crisis last spring, you all reduced the amount of money you pay us to do street tree removals. That money has not been restored in the proposed budget. I believe it was about a $25,000 reduction, if I recall correctly. To accommodate that, we've simply tried to cut back and not do as much. We're doing the bigger, more dangerous trees, getting them on the ground, and then the street department is doing a lot of the cleanup work that doesn't require the trained climbers and forestry folks. So it's probably less than desirable. It's always a constant overload. There's always trees on the list to be removed, and we find ourselves getting involved in a number of neighbor disputes about dead and hazardous trees in their backyards, and that involves a lot of our time, and also usually Public Works Crew, survey crew, trying to settle, you know, the issue of where the property line, line is. So did not request anything to be restored to the budget this year, thinking that there wasn't much opportunity to get it, but that is one area that, you know, it's always tough to keep up with the demand.
Mr. Scrivener. Bill, on average, how many trees would $25,000 take care of? Do you know what it costs you on average to take a tree down?
Well, I really don't. They vary so greatly. Some are obviously just a couple of hours worth of work. We recently had one over off of Fillmore Street that was probably almost a 60-inch diameter, 150-foot tall tree, and it took us several days to get that out of there. So there's really no really rhyme or reason to the cost. It just depends. Usually it's the older, bigger trees that tend to fail, except in storm situations, but...
The only trees that you deal with are those that are on city right of way. Is that true?
Well, of course, the park system primarily, where most, most of the trees are, but we take care of the trees downtown on High Street in the business district, and we still try to keep up a pretty full effort down, down there, even with the reduced funds because of its high visibility and the events that go on down there. We tended to back away from doing as much out in the neighborhood areas or on arterial streets and so forth, and trying to work more closely with the street department crew to help, have them help pick up the slack.
I guess I was referring to tree removal, where there's a dead tree or dying tree or something like that. That's generally right of way situation.
Right. We do get into some situations where we issue an abatement notice, and I think you're familiar with one on Hazelton Street, that we finally got the tree taken out, but in that situation, one of the homeowners, it was a three-way split on the way the tree was owned, crossed the property line. Two of the owners have paid the third majority. We, you know, we had to put a tax lien on his property after we, and that particular one, we contracted with an outside company to remove that, that tree. But typically, we don't get on people's private property unless they fail to take action on their own.
So this was one to the front of that property? That was, it was on the right, in the right of way, in the front of the property?
The one on Hazelton was actually in backyard.
That's what I was thinking. I was, I guess I was wondering why we would get involved in that, because that doesn't pose a danger to, to the street traffic or anything like that. That's really a danger to the homeowner's property, I guess.
Right. It's kind of a service we provide, but it is a, you know, I think the ordinance is written such that if we identify a hazardous tree and it has to meet certain criteria of damaging property or potential to hurt individuals, then it becomes a hazardous tree, and we issue a removal notice.
Would it be possible in each and every case where there is a tree like that, and since we have the remedy of tax liens, would it be, would it make sense to going forward in the future to, to do them all commercially and just, just put a lien on the property if the owner doesn't pay?
We could do that. I guess at least for this first one, we wind up paying the bill out of the park fund, and so the park fund's still going in the hole to take care of it, and we don't know how long it'll be before we actually get, get paid back. Two of the property owners paid immediately. The other one, we don't suspect will get paid until the property is sold, so it could be quite some time.
And that's a downside of tax liens, obviously.
Right.
But at least at some point in time, maybe it can recover.
Yeah.
We never recover if you spend park money on it, you know.
Right.
So anyway, that's just commentary, I guess.
And I'm not sure if there's interest goes on tax liens or not. Drew could probably answer that. So eventually, you know, if, when it comes down to the property being, being sold, I guess we'll eventually recover with a little bit of interest.
And I would think tax liens maybe would encumber a title to some extent, or, you know, how many, how many people are comfortable having a tax lien on their title?
Right, right.
Mr. Mahalovich.
One last follow-up on forestry. So if you don't have the funds to remove it, what is our remedy? Are we going to have to remove the tree, and you're going to charge that, is that going to be charged back to the, to the city funds, or how would that work? Because we're going to remove the tree, I assume.
In past years, you all have provided us some supplemental funding from the general fund for tree removal. And at this point in time, when, when those funds are expended, we are waiting till the next fiscal year before we remove. We've been working, as I mentioned, with the street department in some instances to solve really immediate and serious problems. Some can, can wait, the lower priority ones.
Other questions of Mr. Lockwood? Bill, thank you very much. Good presentation.
Okay.
And Bill Betts, what are, what is the next topic here?
The next topic for tonight would be under tab number six, and those are the, what we titled, we call the special revenue funds. Items such as JC Veterans Plaza, the police training fund, the lodging tax fund, city hall trust fund, the fireman's pension fund, the USS JC submarine trust, the Woodlawn Cemetery would be those items. So happy to discuss them in any way that council would like. Sheila's here, she knows these better than anyone, so she's happy to answer any questions as well, so...
So you are going to handle the question and answer, sort of?
Yes.
Very good. Go ahead and get us started.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just start with the JC Veterans Plaza Trust Fund. The Veterans Plaza is the memorial there out in front of the JC Police Department, and basically the income that we take into account there is basically interest income. There's some repairs and different things when it comes to that, but there is a balanced budget there for the trust fund. It's a very small fund. We do sell a few bricks a year and have to replace those, and then we have some maintenance costs and different things with that item. And Sheila was pointing out that all of these do have their own fund balance, so they are separate from the general fund completely. So that's the Veterans Plaza Fund, if anyone has any questions about that.
Mr. Graham, go ahead.
Mr. Betts, I noticed you mentioned the bricks a while ago. What is the cost of those for purchase of a brick?
I believe it's $100. Matt's not there. Matt would, Matt's department handles that, but I believe it's $100, if I'm not mistaken, so...
It is.
It is, I'm pretty sure.
All right, Bill. Thank you.
All right. I'll move on to the police training fund, and this is one that, even though it does not have an impact on the general fund, for the last couple of years, we've been utilizing it to help offset our costs for police training. And so you, as you can see there, there is some revenue that we take into account, and, and there's about $10,000 worth of revenue that we're estimating for this year, along with about $1,500 in interest. And then the remainder of the funds on the expense side, the $62,000 is what we're giving to the police or offering to the police for training for this year. And their, their fund balance will be able to cover all of that, but as had been stated previously, after this year going into FY 2016, we'll probably have to reconsider because the fund doesn't generate that amount of revenue. It does draw down their fund balance quite a bit.
All right. Questions? All right, let's keep going.
Okay. The next item there is the lodging tax fund, and this is the, for lack of a better term, the lockbox fund that we've talked about in the past. We do get...
We get 2%.
2%. We get 2% of this for the general fund as a revenue line item, so it's part of our revenue. There is 2% here. This fund in and of itself is generated from the sale of hotel rooms and is saved and put into a lockbox for either a convention center or something related to those types of matters for future use.
That's about 8% the budget is.
Anybody? All right, Mr. Betts, keep going.
The next one here is the city hall trust fund. Basically, there's a little bit of a fund balance, and we draw some interest on that particular trust as we speak. About roughly $500 a year is what we're estimating is the interest will be on that. No expenses related to that that we're anticipating this year. The next tab that you'll see there is the fireman's pension fund. And as you can see, for that particular fund, since it's closed, or what we term closed, we don't add any, any funding for it. It's self-supportive. We don't have any revenue or expenses in this particular budget, but it still is a fund that is on the books because we still take care of the retirees that are part of that. There has been some talk, as the council's aware, at the state level of maybe loggers taking over these particular funds. That's not going to happen for the next year at the very minimum, so we will continue to manage and take care of the fireman's pension fund at the city.
Mr. Scrivener. Mr. Betts, we recently repaid a loan to this fund. Will that show up as an entry in this?
It, it, it won't on this, these particular items because of it being a closed fund, but we did, maybe today or tomorrow, pay that. Yeah, it will show up in their CAFR and show up that they received additional funding, and Sheila probably can answer.
Since the fire pension has its own set of books, it will show up on that set. This fund was really utilized when we had an open plan and active firemen in that plan. Since we've closed it down and they have their own set of books, that money will show up on that set of financial reports.
So in this set of reports, where, if some future year I want to go back and look and see how much that payment was, where will I find it in this set of books?
You will not find it on the city's financial statements.
I thought, didn't it come out of our fund balance?
You would see it, yeah. You would see it on the expense side for 2014. There is an expense line item from where we paid that particular deal, but you would not see it here in this particular fund or any accounting of it here.
But it would just show up as a miscellaneous payment, or will it be itemized?
Yes.
Yeah, we actually have a dedicated line item, so in the future budgets, you'll actually see that for a few years because it'll show up on the report.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead.
All right. The next one is the USS submarine trust, JC Jeff City Submarine, Jefferson City submarine trust. And this, just like the city hall trust, has got some money in its fund balance, and the only thing we're anticipating for the coming year is just for it to gain interest. We don't have any expenses anticipated for the next budget year. The next item is the Woodlawn Cemetery, and that's one of the cemetery, cemeteries that we take care of. It does generate some interest, and there is some maintenance fees that go along with the upkeep of the Woodlawn Cemetery. And we did remove some money from their, from their fund balance to put into maintenance for the Woodlawn Cemetery, so there is an expense of about $10,000, of $10,000 for the Woodlawn Cemetery in the coming year.
Yes, Mr. Scrivener. Mr. Betts, you've, you've mentioned fund balance for each one of these funds. Is there anywhere on here that it tells us what the fund balance is?
There is not, but I could certainly get that report to the council if they'd like to know what it was.
We noticed, Mr. Mahalovich, I noticed that there's almost $2,000 of interest income early on. I don't remember which fund it was now, but, so the fund balance must be fairly substantial to generate $2,000 in interest income?
Yes, and I think that was for the JC Veterans Plaza.
I think that's right.
Yep, that's correct, so...
Okay, all right. So if, if there's a substantial fund balance, is that just for perpetual maintenance, or would, are we going to do something to enhance that plaza at some point?
I think the initial, when they initially set it up, and I'm speaking from what I know of history, is that was the goal, was to have a big enough fund balance... of history, is that was the goal, was to have a big enough fund balance to where they would generate interest income that would help with the maintenance. And then if there are, you know, large items that were, wherever to come to fruition there that needed fixed or to enhance the site, they would have that capability as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
That is all for that particular item there. So those are just what we call the special revenue funds there. So if there are any questions or further questions, happy to answer those.
Any questions on any of Mr. Betts' presentation? If not, let's move on to the next item.
Yeah. The one item that we didn't discuss is under item seven, and that's our TIF redevelopment fund. And as part of that, I'm gonna let Sheila kinda talk about the TIF fund and how that works a little bit, and then we'll, the next item will be the benefits discussion.
Or we can do, you wanna do benefits first?
We can go with TIF.
Okay, all right.
So the TIF fund is set up so that currently we have two TIFs. There's one in the south side, and there's one for O'Donohues. And we get revenue in for both of those off of sales tax and also property tax. So the revenues that you see reflected here are what we're estimating for both, both TIFs, including the property and sales tax that would come in. We receive those funds, and in turn, we turn around and pay those out to the developer. And so we do have revenues built in for all of those, and then there are also the expenses that go out that are considered economic redevelopment expenses. It's a balanced fund. It comes in, we pay it out. There's really a wash there. We don't, I guess we do receive a small fee for administering on one that we currently have, and then this is also where we'll start to recognize the Capital Mall TIF funds.
Thank you, Sheila. Mr. Scribner, go ahead.
Because the Capital Mall fund is organized a little differently than these TIFs, there are actually, the revenue will outpace the, or it's, hopefully it'll outpace the expense. Is that not, or it has the potential to?
It is true. The Capital Mall, it's my understanding, is going to be a reimbursement type, a pay-as-you-go, so they will submit reimbursement claims to us. So going forward, it's highly probable that this TIF fund will have a fund balance in it, and that would typically be then the funds that we would have remaining to pay to the Capital Mall. Right now, the two that we have, we bring it in, we pay it out, and the fund balance is zero.
So the portion of the sales tax that is the city's portion will get paid out to the city from this fund just the same as you pay out to the county, or, or, or how, how are we gonna recognize, because it's 50/50?
When we receive our sales tax disbursement, it will be coded to our sales tax revenue, and then I calculate what portion of that was attributable to the vendors within each TIF district. And once we do that, we transfer the money from the general fund into the TIF fund so that we know that that's specifically what it's for.
So it goes to general fund first rather than going to TIF?
Correct, because you take in your sales tax especially in there. Now, on property tax, that's different. When they make those property tax payments to us, the collector designates how much it is and which TIF it's for, and it automatically goes into this fund when we're putting our cash receipt through the process. But sales tax is slightly different.
I guess what I'm getting at here is, I would really like an accounting of what the sales tax growth is, that the city's portion of it that they get to keep for the mall, because, I mean, after all, we want to measure our success there, and that's one way to measure it, not only the growth of the mall and the, and the better facility and the, and maybe more businesses and what have you, but also the revenues that come to the city as a result of that growth.
And we would be able to provide that from the standpoint of, we had to calculate our baseline, and so we will know going forward. We have to know the difference between the baseline so that we can pay out the increment. So we would easily be able to provide that.
Good, thank you.
Sheila, is that base, or that payout, is that annual? Is it monthly, or?
The payout for the two that we currently have is an annual payout. For the Capital Mall, it will be based on whenever they decide to turn in their reimbursement requests.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, Bill?
That basically concludes all of the funds and different tabs that we need to discuss, so I believe Ms. Strope is going to give a presentation on the benefits at this time.
Ms. Strope, whenever you're ready.
That stays. Okay, thank you. Okay, wanted to talk a little bit about health insurance. As you all know, the budget currently has 10% increase in it for health insurance. We have been working with our, with Wall Street Insurance on our health, actually on all of our benefits. We started on our health insurance with a 23% increase on our current plan from United Healthcare. We've worked very closely with them on talking about different options. We've looked at a lot of different options with different companies. We also got a bid from Coventry that was 37% higher than our current plan. Blue Cross declined to propose. Cigna did not respond to our request. Humana is not writing group business in this area. Health Link is only doing self-funded TPA plans. We checked with Missouri Consolidated Healthcare Plans. They are not currently taking any new public entities. We looked at self-insurance, so we looked at a lot of different options, spent a lot of time, oh, we also had discussions with the school district, too. Spent a lot of time, I worked directly with United Healthcare, kinda going back and forth on some different options, and I think considering the market, we've actually gotten this down to some really great options for our employees. That's under the 10%. So if you wanna look at the first page that I passed out to you, if you look at the first column where it says renewal plan or option one, that is our current plan. So you can kinda go down and see what the, the product is, the office visit co-pays, deductibles, co-insurance, farm prescriptions, that type of thing. If you go down to the bottom, that's down to an 18% increase to maintain our current plan as-is. Obviously, 18% doesn't fit within the budget, and I don't think that that's an amount that we wanna try to pass on to the employees either. So we've, we've come up with some options with United Healthcare. They are willing to work with us to put together a couple of different options that we can actually offer our employees, three different options to choose from, and those are option two, three, and four. Option two is called the FlexPoint Plan, and that is, it, that plan is gonna be, most closely resemble our current plan. It's gonna have a $500 deductible for the employees. The office visit co-pays go up a little bit. They go up from, you know, $25 to $30 for a primary care physician. The biggest change with this plan that would impact the employees probably the most would be, it goes from a 90% co-insurance to an 80% co-insurance. So in other words, once the employees have met their deductible, they would be responsible for 20% of the expenses. Rather than our current plan, they would be responsible for 10% of their expenses until they reach their out-of-pocket maximum. And the out-of-pocket maximum's a little bit higher, too. The other thing that's unusual and kinda different about this plan is that it allows four office visits per year for each family member, and then also up to four urgent care visits per year. After that, it would then go to deductible. So that's why they call it a FlexPoint. It's kind of a flexible. It does a little bit. It's meant to cover for those people who don't have a lot of ongoing medical expenses. Maybe they go to the doctor once or twice a year. That would go to the office visit to the co-pays. If they end up going a lot, though, it, those office visits would start hitting deductibles. Okay? And that is per member, so per family member, so, you know, if it were myself and my husband and two of my kids covered, each one of us would have four office visits at the doctor, four urgent care visits, that type of thing, before it would start hitting the deductibles. Okay? The option number three that's listed is called the Navigate Plan. This is actually a plan that goes back and is very similar to the old HMO plans. You guys remember the HMO plans where you have to have a primary care physician? If you wanna go to a specialist, you have to get the referral from your primary care physician. That's exactly what this plan does. So it would require a primary care physician and referrals to specialists. And the other thing is that this plan does not cover any out-of-pocket, I mean, out-of-network expenses, okay? So they have to, in order to file claims with this plan, they would have to go to in-network. One of the good things about United Healthcare is they do have a very extensive network across the country, so people who have, you know, like myself, that has a student in college out of town, there would still be facilities available for them out of town in just about any area. Then option number four is a health savings account, so it's a high deductible account or plan. It has a $2,600 deductible, so all office visits and those types of things would all go to the, to the deductible first. And then it has an out-of-pocket of $3,600. So those are the plans, the way that we're kinda looking...
The city goes with what it needs.
Yeah, the, on all of these plans, options two, three, and four, employees could choose any one of the three options, and then it also does get rid of that self-insured deductible that we've been doing, so, which is a real plus for the city. You can kinda look at the costs at the bottom there. It shows that the FlexPoints at a 6% increase, the Navigates at a 6.7%, and then the health savings accounts at a 9.3% decrease. So if you look at the second page that I have for you there, I've kinda put, you know, what would those costs look like? And I would like to mention, too, that I'm actually still working with United Healthcare on these rates. Because the rates between the Navigate and the FlexPoint are so close, I'm actually working with them to get the Navigate rates brought down to the FlexPoint rates. They didn't hang up the phone on me or anything when I asked, so that was promising, but I don't know if that's gonna happen. But I just wanted to let you know that this is still basically, it's not complete yet.
So before Gail goes into the, to the specifics, obviously, the percentages come down because employees would be picking up a little more of that cost, the difference between the 90/10 and the 80/20. And then there's a couple of options that we'll talk about related to that. Councilmember Scribner suggested that we talk to the school district. As Gail mentioned, we did. They were a little bit higher than we were at the time, and so we, it didn't make sense for us to try to go in with the school district. If it did, there's a whole lot of work. That's just not an easy, hey, we wanna join you. There's a lot of work that, that needs to happen over a year to do that, but it's still something that may be worth discussing. It's my understanding, Gail, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the school district increased their cost to, to their employees on the health insurance.
They have not, actually, they have not increased their costs since 2012.
Okay. So they've got a little bit different system, but their employees didn't see an increase on, on, on the school district side. We also checked with the state, and as Gail mentioned, the state's just not accepting any other public sector plan, so we couldn't go in with the state. And as my understanding, the state didn't increase on the employee side either, did they?
Right. They did not include, increase their, the premiums for employees in this current year, 2014, and they are not increasing them for 2015 either. The state's picking up the full cost.
And then just, just so you know, on option one, like Gail mentioned, that it's got, if you look kind of in the, that second box, it's got a deductible of $1,500 there. The city, and this, this is previously, you know, current year, the city would essentially subsidize that, a portion of that deductible. I think we paid $1,000, up to $1,000 of that. So the plan was a little higher deductible, but the employee didn't see that deductible piece. And it's important to note that on these other options, other than the option four, which is the last one, the deductibles are kind of, well, not kind of, they are in that $500 to $1,000 range. So that's different, and I think that's a good perspective from the employee. And then we haven't had the opportunity for options, as Gail mentioned before, and she's been, worked really hard with United to be able to get some options where employees could at least pick something that might be more appropriate for their particular circumstances, and I think that that's a good news story, too. So I just wanna make sure we summarize that before we got into the specifics.
Thank you.
Which is the next page.
Okay, so the second page shows, if you look at the first column under 2014 current, that shows our current plan for 2014. If you notice, you, there's three boxes on the page. The top box is all of the total costs, so total premiums. The middle box is the city's cost on everything, and the bottom box would be the employees' cost on everything. So you see the, the 2014, the current premiums. Under 2015, the second column, it says city, this would be the cost if the city picked up the entire increase, okay? So if you go all the way down to the bottom of that column to the employee cost box, it proposes that the rates with the employees would pay would stay the same in 2015 that they're paying now. That would have an impact on the city, a total for the, for, across all funds of $223,000. Okay? And just for reference, the city budgeted a 10% increase in health insurance is $230,300 across all funds. So the $223 would fall into...
Hold on, everybody's doing the math, so hold on a minute.
Yeah, so there's about $7,000, it'd be about, if the city picked up the full cost of the increase, and keep in mind, that's worst-case scenario, too, okay? That would be if every employee went with the highest-cost plan, which is the Navigate Plan, okay? So if they did that, there'd still be a savings of about $7,000 in the budget. Does that make sense? Is everybody following? About the additional cost for 2015, if the city picked up the entire increase, would be $223,000. Exactly. And again, that's worst-case scenario. The third column, 2015, where it says share increase, that would show the city's cost and the employees' cost if we split the increase between the city and the employees. Across all funds in the city, it would be a cost of about $187,000. And keep in mind, we have $230,000 in the budget. The last column is, shows the health savings account, and with the health savings account, what I'm proposing would be for the city to contribute into each person's health savings account, the amount of money between the difference between the employee-only cost for the health savings account and the other plans, which is $71.30. So I propose that it'd be $71.30 per month, which is a total of $855 for the year that they would contribute to that. And then, of course, the employees could contribute additional funds into that health savings account, and that would help pay for their deductible, obviously. Yeah, does everybody understand what the health savings account is? That's basically a high deductible plan where they can put money in. We can put money in for them also, and they would use that money then to pay their deductible.
And that's set up through like a, a bank or something like that?
Yes, exactly.
Of their choice, I guess?
Uh, no, it, it would be, the city would set it all up for them, so they wouldn't have to go through the hassle of trying to find all that. We would take care of all of it for them.
Does, under that, under that option, does that roll over? Or is that just at the end of the year, it has to be expended for...
No, that does roll over, and that money would stay with them. So if they didn't spend it and they left employment with the city, that account, that's their money, that account would still go with them.
Okay.
We, we still do have the cafeteria plan, which is another benefit that can work actually pretty well with some of these.
The cafeteria could still, employees could still use that for the Navigate and the FlexPoint plans.
Which is pre-tax, so.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me. And is that only for the high deductible ones, so option four?
Yes.
For the Health Savings. The cafeteria could apply to the others.
Health Saving Tax, Health Savings Accounts are pre-tax monies also. And that's the advantage of using Health Savings Account, is that, in essence, there are limits on how much you can contribute. It's only a percentage of your income, but with this $2,600 deductible, for instance, a lot of employees could contribute as much as $2,600, especially with the city, if the city were to contribute as well. And that's tax-free money, too. You don't pay any taxes on it until you actually use it. It's like an IRA, in effect, only it's a Health Savings Account. And so you get to pay your deductibles, you get to pay your co-pays and other medical expense with pre-tax money. And so you don't, you know, people that have to have it taxed first have to earn more than a dollar to pay a dollar's worth of medical expense, because you have to pay the taxes on that money. When you use pre-tax money in an HSA, you earn a dollar, you can spend a dollar toward that, because there's no tax on it.
That and the Cafeteria Plan are both pretty good.
Yeah, the Cafeteria Plan, you lose at the end of the year, and there are some restrictions on what you can use it for.
And you've got to fund it upfront as you're going, but still, it's an option there that's good for employees and other good options.
And you can pay some medical expense out of your HSA, like dental, if you don't have dental coverage, you can pay things like that out of it as well.
Other questions, comments?
And Gail's going to go through an example, but I want to just make sure of something. So the buying down of the deductible, that money that we have budgeted for that could go away.
Yes. I mean, that's all a part of our current budget, so...
For next year's budget, we had a hunk of money in there for that particular piece.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's a separate piece of money, though, that would be saved. I think that's included in our total cost of health insurance, isn't it? No? Okay.
So if it's that sa...
If that's the case, then that's, yeah, that's another savings we would not need to spend.
Yeah.
Just for further clarification on that, is we have the 10% in the budget, which for all the different funds is $230,000, the exact amount, is $230,299.30. So when Gail's showing you these numbers here, the cost is less than that, and that's the 10%. We also have a line item in the budget that is for what we call our self-insurance piece. It buys down the deductible. And then for the FY 2015 budget, it's $117,000 for the general fund itself. So you would be able to take that $117,000, and we could put that up on the parking lot as a reduction on the expense side. So that would obviously help our $273,000 parking lot item there, so.
Mr. Costalis?
Mr. Betts, you said $230,000 there for insurance? That's the increase, correct?
Correct.
That's not the total insurance.
Oh, no, sir.
It's just the increase from previous year.
Correct. That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And as Gail mentioned, and I want to commend Gail for working several iterations of this information, literally, today, we were still getting some information, and we've got some voicemails to continue to get some more information. But what I think we're presenting is what I would consider the worst-case scenario at this point, and it may be a little bit better, but, you know, that remains to be seen.
It is.
As far as some of the premiums coming down.
Yeah. I'd say it's worst-case scenario. The plan is to actually have resolution in front of the full council at next Monday night's meeting. So kind of what I think we're looking for some direction on at this point is what you want to do with the 10% regarding, do we want to have the city pick up the full cost of the increase premium, or do we want to share that premium amount between the employees and the city?
Mr. Scribner?
I guess I'm a little confused. You used the term "option." Are you proposing to give the employees the option to choose between these three, or are you wanting to choose one of the three and all employees have the same plan?
No, we're looking, the employees would have the option between any one of the three.
Okay, so that would eliminate option one, and their choices between option two, three, and four?
Exactly. Yes.
Right. Two, three, and four would be our health package that we offer to employees, and they could pick which may better, of those plans which may better meet their particular circumstances. Number one is our current plan at the percentage that Gail got them down to after a lot of argument and discussion. And they've been very helpful. United has been great to work with. It's just, you know, it's just a whole exercise of having those discussions.
Do you know which one of United's networks that they would be using? Because they have multiple networks.
Oh, gosh. Choice Preferred? It's Choice Plus.
Okay. I would suggest maybe that you go on the website or something and look up that network and see who the providers are, because it does matter.
Well, if it's product, Choice Plus Insurance is what we have under option one now. And then two has Choice Plus, four has Choice Plus, and three is Select. I don't know what the difference...
I think product's probably the name of the insurance policy, but I don't know if it even has the network listed on here.
Yeah, it's...
It did a run its own, didn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's a very extensive, it's a very extensive network. Now, the big thing, remember, on the option three, the Navigate, that does not include out-of-network benefits. But it's very extensive. It's the same, it would be the same network we're using now.
Okay.
Mr. Prather?
Gail, when's enrollment for the employees?
We would actually have, the actual open enrollment would take place the first week of December.
So what you're saying is that we won't know the true cost benefit? You have this worst-case scenario, but we won't know the cost savings until after the employees are actually signed up?
Exactly.
Okay. That being said, the $1,111,000 that you're talking about, is that automatic, or we won't know that until after that time?
That would be automatic if the council would go with this plan. It'd be 100, and Sheila pointed out another thing, it'd be 117,000, and we have a different line item for, we also have a self-insurance retirees line item, that's another 5,400, and that would go away. So it'd actually be 122,400, because we would no longer offer that self-insurance piece there. So it would be automatic as part of the budget.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Scribner?
Did I, I apologize, I was reading this, and I didn't hear you clearly. Did you say that they would enroll in the summer?
No, in December.
December. Okay. Because I was going to say, they would still be under, at least for the month of November, they would still be, I guess, November and December, they would still be under this, their old plan.
Yes.
And so I guess we would continue to have the buy-down, if you will, of the deductible for the first two months, or the month of November, December? So would it not be 100% savings?
Sure. It goes into effect January 1st, so I think that'd be correct.
So you'd have...
Yeah.
Good point.
A sixth of that fund.
Then we'll have employee, we'll have employee meetings scheduled for October 21st, 22nd, 23rd, or 22nd, 23rd, 24th, whatever that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is in October. We always try to have the rates out to the employees by mid-October, because we have so many employees who have spouses that work for the state, and their open enrollment is the month of October. So they have to make their decisions by October 31st.
The policy has been for spouses and children to pay the full incremental premium, or has the city paid part of that in the past?
The premium increases?
Well, just the incremental premium, the whatever premium is charged in addition to what the employee pays. In other words, if I'm a single employee and my premium is $500, and Glenn is a married employee and his spouse is covered, so it's $700. Does the employee pay the full $200? Would Glenn pay the full $200 for his spouse, or is the city paying part of the premium for the spouse?
No, the city is paying part of the premium. If you look on the page that I had put together, where it shows the current, if you go down to the third, the bottom box, that's the employee cost. So you can see where it says, "Employee only, zero, spouse, 232, children, 145, and family, 328." Those are the current premiums per month that the employees are paying for those plans.
Okay. And, but is that 232 that the employee is paying for his spouse, is that the full additional cost for an employee and spouse?
No. If you go back up to the top, then the top box is the total premium. So you would see on Employee Only, the premium for, for Employee Only would be 445, 54. Spouse would be $935.64.
So it costs the city significantly more to employ someone that has a family than someone who doesn't?
Yeah, considerably.
Mr. Strope, did you say you, before the budget is approved, you will need some direction on this matter?
Yeah. What we're, like I said, what we're really looking for some direction on is, you know, what you'd like us to do with the 10% and the cost of the premium increases. Do we want to put the full increases to the 10%, or do we want to lower the 10% and split that with the employees?
And it certainly doesn't need to be decided tonight. I mean, it's certainly Thursday or later on. We want to make sure we laid it out and explained everything and tried to give you some data. And like I said, we're literally just getting some information today on it.
Thank you. So this will remain, so everyone can study this, you know, on your time, and we'll come back and revisit this at another budget meeting. Mr. Costalis?
Mr. Strope, could you come back on Thursday with the costs? Worst-case scenario, if we go 10%, if we split it, whatever?
Yeah, I think that's what's on here.
That is what's on there?
Uh-huh. The first column, well, the first column, 2014 current, is our current one. The second column, where it says 2015, city pickup increase...
Fifty-fifty?
Yeah, the city pickup increase, that would be the employees, I'm sorry, the city picking up the full cost of all premium increases, and that's worst-case scenario. That's using the most expensive plan that they've given us. So that's worst case. The third column is 2015 share increase, which would be the city and the employees splitting the increase. Yeah, so if you look at that third one, this employees would pick up $36,168.
That's the difference between the share and the not share.
Okay. It's not a 50-50, it's a skewed.
No, it's, since it's like a 6.7% increase, each of them go up about 6.7% from what the current breakout is.
Thank you.
But also recall, the plan changes to a 90-10, and it's got a few other limitations in it, which is why the percent goes down. And I also wanted to mention that the Affordable Care Act accounts for about 5.5% of the increase, so the increase that you see there is not totally related to our experience.
I think we've covered everything on the last page, the points for consideration. The only other thing I have on there, just to throw out, a couple of people have asked me about what a 2% pay increase looks like for city employees. So at a $45,000 salary, it would be about a $900 per year. And a $35,000 salary, it'd be about $700 per year. So everything, everything else that's on that page, we've already mentioned. And then if there aren't any other questions about health insurance, I could just very quickly say that on the dental and vision, we are looking at slight increases on those. The vision is picked up entirely by the employees. The dental, the city pays for the employee-only portion of it, and the employees pick up the full cost for their dependents. We are looking at a little bit of an increase there. We will be renewing contracts for life insurance, long-term disability, but we're not looking at big increases. Actually, the life insurance is going to go down a little bit. And then we're also looking at changing our Cafeteria Plan provider, which is the provider that provides the unreimbursed medical and the childcare reimbursement plan. So we're looking at switching that, and we'll have the debit cards available for employees for those. So still kind of nailing down a few things on those, so I hope to have all of that before you next Monday night at the full council meeting, so.
So we'll visit this at a future budget meeting then?
Yeah, we can.
Mr. Graham?
So did you say that we are looking at possibly someone else's force dental, or no?
No, actually, we're looking at staying with Guardian as our current provider of that.
Is there some reason why that wasn't sent out?
Oh, it was sent out.
Okay.
Yeah, it was sent out, and I think we got bids from five or six different companies, at least, on that. One of the nice things about Guardian is we use Guardian for dental, vision, accident, life, long-term disability, and because of that, they give us a pretty good deal, some pretty good discounts for putting those all together, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Scribner?
Mr. Strope, I'm concerned that, I know it was true when I was in management with, in a previous job experience that I had, that, and I'm sure it's true with the city, that employees are not always aware just how much their benefit package costs, or just exactly how much they are receiving in the way of increased benefits and so forth. So if you would, I could do the calculation, and I was just sitting here thinking about doing it, and I thought, well, why should I do it when you have the means to do it? Would you give us a spreadsheet that shows us the value of payroll increase? And you don't have to do it for every employee level, I'm not saying that necessarily, but just a typical employee, what the value is in terms of a salary increase, a cost share of, or the healthcare increase that the city is going to pick up, the part that the city will pick up. Dental plans, whatever benefits there are, where the city is going to have an increased cost, and the city is going to pick it up, it's not going to be picked up by the employee. If you could do that.
Yeah, do you want to show just the increases, or do you want a total one that shows the total value of all of it?
Well, I think it would be nice if we knew what the total value for an employee is, but also, if, let's say that we give a 2% pay increase and the city incurs another 2% in employee benefit cost. So in reality, the city is going to be incurring a 4% increase, even though the employee might not see it in their payroll. You know, the $71 HSA contribution you're talking about a month, that is a real benefit. And people tend to overlook that. They look at percentages of salary increase, they don't look at percentages of increase of cost.
Yeah. One of the things that we do every February is we provide every employee with a statement, a full benefits compensation statement, and it does include all of the benefits and shows exactly what they pay and exactly what the city pays for all of the benefits. And it's very comprehensive, so I'd be happy to show you guys a sample of that, too, to see exactly what that looks like. I mean, it even includes things like the cost of vacation pay and the cost of sick leave and things like that, so.
I commend you for that, because it's very easy to lose sight of what those benefits cost. And there is a real value to them, even though they may not show up in your paycheck. And an additional value is, is that you're not paying income tax on them.
You're right.
You know? You're, in some cases, a person might be better off to have a larger contribution to their HSA and a smaller pay increase, because you're paying income tax and social security tax on your salary. Now, a lower-income employee, that may not work, they may need the cash. But for some people, a larger HSA contribution is actually more valuable to them than a salary increase. So, thank you.
So, Ms. Strope, you'll be back with this additional information at a...
Yeah, or we could send it out, too, whatever.
We can send it out, but she will be back.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll be here Thursday night, so I can answer any questions that you guys have, and then, like I said, I'll have some of the things on the budget, I mean, on the agenda for next Monday night's full council meeting.
I'm glad Mr. Scribner brought that up. That will be interesting information and good information. I'm glad Mr. Scribner... I'm glad Mr. Scrivver asked for that. Do you have anything left in your presentation?
No, I don't.
Are there any further questions of Ms. Strope? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're ready to move into sales tax F.
That is correct. Councilwoman Wood, you look behind tab three there, starting on page eight, or two eighty-eight, sorry. Starting on page two eighty-eight. And I've also supplied you a handout of the cash flow for the sales tax plan. This is something we had done in the past after the budget. But since part of our budget process is to approve the sales tax budget, we thought we'd go ahead and discuss it now and give you some information about the sales tax. But I'll just kind of, I'll go through the revenue portion of this and then talk about the expenses a little bit and then discuss the cash flow. But we're estimating a four point seven million dollars worth of revenue. And this is for the capital improvement sales tax plan that we utilize every year. As far as the expenditures for two thousand and fifteen, we have budgeted four point six nine one, five hundred thousand, or five hundred dollars worth of expenses. So eighty-five hundred of it will be going back to the fund balance to be utilized in a later tax year there. So if you look on page two eighty-eight and two eighty-nine, you can see the areas where the expenses will come in for this particular budget year. Obviously, there are expenses from previous years. There's revenue or funds from previous years that have been held over to help us. You know, we don't spend every bit of the money each year that we are given because it's one of those things where you have to build up sometimes to get a certain project done before you can utilize it. So that's the total budget. I'll talk about the cash flow a little bit. On the cash flow spreadsheet, we've met with the department directors who are involved here, trying to make sure we keep our cash flow in check to the way, so that we're not spending more money than we are bringing in, putting too many projects ahead because it is a five-year plan. So looking at FY two thousand and fifteen there, or any area there where you see the gold or yellow-colored highlights, what has happened there is we've made changes from your previous plan that you had approved in two thousand and fourteen. So in two thousand and fourteen, there was a plan presented to you. Anywhere where there's a gold highlight, you will note that there's a change. So for instance, on MSP there, you can see that there's a gold highlight all the way out at FY two thousand and seventeen of two hundred thousand dollars. That would have been a million dollars in the previous plan. But the council has authorized us to move some of that money to other projects. So there's no longer a million dollars worth of funding allocated for that particular line item. Similarly, on Stadium and Jefferson, and I'll go through each and every one of them if you'd like, or I'll just kind of point out a couple of them. But on Stadium and Jefferson, you see in FY two thousand and fifteen, there's a million dollars. And in sixteen, there's a million seventy-five there for that particular plan. The million-dollar amount was not there in FY two thousand and fifteen. That has been funding that was added in order to take care of that particular project. So in the Lafayette particular line item there had two hundred thousand. There's no need for that money, so it got moved to other projects. So it was two hundred thousand previously. It's now zero. I said I might go through them all, but maybe I will. Old Town Projects in FY two thousand and fifteen previously was three hundred thousand. You can see that it's gotten moved back to FY two thousand and seventeen in order to help with the cash flow there on the Old Town Projects. Same with the transit matching funds. That funding has gotten moved back. In the past, it was two hundred thousand in FY fifteen and two hundred in FY seventeen. Now it's just a total of four hundred thousand in FY seventeen. And on Stormwater, it was six hundred and fifty thousand in FY fifteen. And it was two fifteen in FY seventeen. So you can see that three hundred thousand of that got moved back to FY seventeen. So that's the changes there in the public works portion of that. And again, a lot of these changes is just to try to help us make sure that we cash flow as we go through the projects and that we don't spend too much money upfront. We haven't brought in the funding yet because we have a couple more years' worth of sales tax to collect. So we can't spend it all at once, so. I believe there might be a question, Mr. Bray.
Go ahead, Mr. Mahalovich.
In my mind, when you say we took money out of MSP, we really brought that forward to the Greater MSP Project, which is the Lafayette Interchange, to get us to MSP, so.
Yes, sir.
I felt that was all still within the project boundaries in my mind.
And I think we would agree with you on that as well. I probably misspoke when I said taking, yeah, we utilized it and reallocated it in a different fashion as opposed to just that particular MSP lineup as the greater project there. So that is a correct statement. I will continue on there, just moving down to the police field equipment. On police field equipment, we actually had an FY fifteen, we moved up thirty thousand dollars. In FY sixteen, they had two ninety. So now they have two sixty in FY sixteen and thirty in FY two thousand and fifteen. So that's the change there in that particular area. And then the only other change from the previous plan is the Oak Hills Master Plan. And what we did there on the Oak Hills Master Plan is, there was twenty thousand dollars under the FY sixteen plan and only ten under FY fifteen. We went ahead and consolidated that. And all thirty thousand is under the FY fifteen plan. So the remainder of the plan remains unchanged from what the council had approved previously. Happy to answer any further questions that you might have or provide any information in the future that you might have, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Scrivver.
I'm curious, I see this two hundred and sixty thousand for police field equipment. Do you know or would the chief mind telling what that is? Is that various and sundry items or is that one large item or?
I'm sorry, we don't have that with us tonight, but it's a series of items. There are quite a few items all been identified to match that amount.
Mr. Mahalovich?
Seems like I remember us saying we're going to use some of this sales tax F money for police vehicles?
Actually, the plan is for sales tax E. In the previous sales tax plan, we still obviously have some open line items. I don't...
I've got, we've got it here.
Yeah.
So what item was that? There's seven thousand...
Yep, what happens there in sales tax E?
What page is that?
Two eighty-three, two eighty-three.
So I'd like to see that.
Two eighty-six. Two eighty-six, two eighty-seven.
I'm looking at sales tax D. Okay, you said E?
Yes.
Excuse me, strike that. You are the finance director, I'm sorry.
No problem. The, if you look there on page two eighty-seven, I don't know, a quarter of a way down the page, you'll see a hundred and eight thousand dollar line item. That's for police vehicles. And where we got that funding from is, as we go through sales tax, there's obviously interest that's collected because we have funds that sit in the account for some time. So we collect interest. Some accounts get closed and, you know, a project is completed and there's a few thousand dollars left over here or there that's no longer needed to complete that project. So it goes into what we term, our technical term, called the gleaning fund. I don't know why we use that term, none of us really do, but that's the term we utilize. And so it's money that's not allocated for any particular project. And we have, I believe, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, roughly, we believe, of gleaning money. So we made the suggestion, in order to help balance the budget this year, to buy four police vehicles out of sales tax E gleaning funds, or a hundred and eight thousand there.
Mr. Scrivver?
I was going to wait till a later time, but this thing has been moving so quickly. I'm afraid I might not get a chance to say it. And since we're on this topic, I have talked to some other council members, certainly not a majority of council members yet, so I'm bringing this as a surprise on some of you tonight. And I apologize for that. I'm of the opinion that, I know in the time that I've been on the council, it has, I don't know if you want to call it tradition or policy or what, but those funds that have been left over from previous sales taxes and gleanings, if you will, have traditionally been used for unanticipated and, you know, things that pop up in the way of capital improvements. I'll give you an example. We've all heard the group come from Country Club Drive and talk to us about their road being rough and asking that it be smoothed out. And I know Public Works Department has proposed that if there was money available in this year's budget, they would diamond grind that before the end of the year, I think, for about thirty-five thousand. And those are the kind of projects that have been, we've been able to do. And traditionally, that money has been capital improvement sales, those capital improvement sales tax monies, when they've been left over, have gone toward capital improvement projects, streets, sidewalks, that sort of thing. So I'm going to propose, I'm not saying that we shouldn't get the police cars. But it would be my preference, since police cars have traditionally, when they haven't been just absolutely budgeted in the capital improvement sales tax budget, and to my knowledge, they've not been there in the time I've been on the council that I can recall. I would prefer to see us fund four police cars out of two thousand and fourteen so that they come out of fund balance, which is, in an essence, general revenue because police cars have always been funded out of general revenue. And that we go ahead and fund them out of general revenue in this year so that it doesn't affect the two thousand and fifteen budget. And then you've got five police cars that are funded out of general revenue in the two thousand and fifteen budget. That would be my preference. It would also be my preference that we fund the GPS for eighteen thousand, nine hundred out of fund balance in two thousand and fourteen rather than having it affect the two thousand and fifteen budget. And I'm going to propose that either tonight or probably in a future, before we, you know, wrap the budget up. I'm going to propose that we do that, take it off the parking lot and put it in two thousand and fourteen so that it comes out of fund balance.
Mr. Henry?
And Councilman Scrivver, just to ask you a question in that regard, because I think I'm kind of coming along the same lines as you. That still keeps our fund, as you've looked at, looked at over, that still keeps our fund balance at a decent percentage, correct?
I think now, and I couldn't say exactly, but I think it's about eighteen percent now, maybe seventeen and a half, somewhere in there. And it would keep it above what I think we considered a minimum of twelve, thirteen percent. But you correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, I'll give you what I know for sure and then add a caveat in there of what I don't know for sure. So if you were to do what you suggested, and Steve had pointed out, there had been some discussion, so he asked me to kind of be prepared to talk about this. If you did that, took the hundred and eight thousand, and I'm going to give you, it would reduce the fund balance of what I know. Now, there's a caveat to this. Would take it down to thirteen point seven percent is what it would take it down to. Throwing in the other eighteen thousand would probably take it down to a little more than thirteen point six percent. So it'd be roughly thirteen point six percent. What I don't know is how we're going to end the year for FY two thousand and fourteen revenues versus expenses. I believe revenues are going to come in above expenses. I've been saying that for a while now. I still hold true to that with a few months left, so, better, right? That's right.
Anyway, we...
Come on. I always give a caveat that, who knows? So I think that thirteen point seven percent will grow at the end of the FY two thousand and fourteen budget. So it is, if that motion were to pass and that were to happen, what I for sure know is it would take it down to thirteen point seven. But I think that would grow once we end it.
And we, during the last three or four years, what was the lowest that it got to, you know, offhand? It was down around nine percent at one time, wasn't it?
I don't know that it ever got quite that low. I couldn't give you the exact number.
Nine, nine plus.
Right. It was low, it was lower than what it is today, yes. Or what it would even be if you did this, yes.
So I'm not asking anybody to make a decision tonight, but I wanted everybody to know that that was something that I wanted them to consider.
Let's go to Mr. Graham, and then we'll come over to Mr. Mahalovich.
Yeah, Councilman Scrivver, I'm trying to put my head around what you just said. So you're saying that all nine vehicles that's being proposed, that they come out of the general fund budget?
Yes, four of them in fourteen and five of them in fifteen.
Okay. And for the previous year, I know we purchased, I believe it was a SWAT vehicle, didn't that come out of sales tax?
That's correct.
E? So I'm just trying to put my head around it because you just said that in the past, we normally haven't taken a vehicle out of sales tax.
I said patrol cars, or I meant to say patrol cars. And the difference is, it was part of the proposal. In other words, whenever we went out to the public and we said, we're going to do this, 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 and this, it was one of the thises. That SWAT vehicle was actually listed, or I don't know if it was listed. Was it listed individually? I think it was actually on the brochure. But at any rate, it was part of that proposed expenditure. So the public had a chance to know in advance. Whereas, you know, there's nothing wrong with taking the police vehicles out of this. It's just different than the way we've done it in the past. You know, there's nothing wrong with doing things different than the way you've done them in the past. It just sets a new precedent. It sets a new policy. And if that's the policy that we want to operate under, that's okay. But it's different than we've done it before.
And I know you talked about the fund balance and right now, sitting around about eighteen percent. And I know that later on, we're going to bring before the full council, because we have talked about this on several occasions in the Finance Committee, about bringing some numbers to the full council to see what we're comfortable with, whether it's the eighteen percent, seventeen percent, or the sixteen percent. So that's going to be real interesting for us to have a discussion as a full council, so.
Well, the reason that I personally am comfortable with this, and others may not be, and I'm okay with that if they're not. But I felt like that the fund balance, you know, sometimes it gets referred to as a rainy day fund. I don't see it that way. I see the fund balance as, we prepare a budget, we do our very best to know, you know, to estimate what our expenses and our revenues are going to be. But that's never a perfect exercise. Sometimes your expenses are a little higher or a little lower. Sometimes your revenues are a little higher or a little lower. And the difference, if it's a positive difference, goes into the fund balance. And that money, as long as you have maintained enough of a fund balance to operate in the case of a catastrophe, and we just had three years of what I would call catastrophe, and our fund balance at nine or ten percent was adequate. We never really had a problem with three really bad years. So to, you know, feel like you need eighteen percent is probably more cautious than I really feel the need for. So to me, that makes the money that is between the twelve and the eighteen, that should be available to buy things you need. One-time purchases, not, don't use the fund balance to add employees or pay for salary increases. Use it to buy something one time, if you need it. There's nothing wrong with it. It's just like dipping into your savings account to buy something that you need.
Well, I totally agree with that. I just know that when you look at my savings account, I feel a lot better having more than what I do having less, you know. So I know it's going to be real interesting, we're going to talk about what the council as a whole feel comfortable with our fund balance being. And I'm certainly on the opinion of being on the higher side because of, like what you said, a major catastrophe or just emergencies that we have to have funds out there. So that's just my two cents about it.
All right, let's go to Mahalovich, and then Prather, and then Henry.
I totally agree with your logic there. I don't know if the specific twelve percent or eighteen is right, but I think that that's a proposal in front of us with regard to our finance policies. So I'm anxious for us all as a council to debate that and especially that section on fund balance. And I think if you want a good read, if you, is that little, oh, yeah, there you are. That little book there was about as succinct and as straightforward about fund balances as you can get. Three questions. Number one, D is gone, right? We've gleaned all of D.
D is not quite all gone yet.
Okay, that's why you have it still here in our book.
That's why it's still there, that's correct. A, B, and C are, but D is still...
Okay, well, we'll...
We might be coming to you to close it and move what's left of it forward in the futures.
Okay, now, in regard to gleaning of E?
Yes.
I'm having to really squint here, but it looks to me that this was, the line item for E was police vehicles.
We created that when we did... We created that when we did the budget.
You just now...
Yeah, we created that when we did the budget, that's correct.
Okay, do you know where it came from, by the way? Is it just, gleaning is collapsing all the other...
Right, it's, yeah, it's interest that comes together and all those, so it could have been, a lot of it could have been interest, and it's projects that, you know, maybe it's a road project that costs, you know, $4 million, and it really only came in at 3.999, you know, so there's a couple thousand dollars. So it's just those kind of things. When projects are over, we just take what's left and isn't spent by the departments and glean it.
Probably I can look back the year before and figure that out, maybe.
You have to look back several years probably for this one, but yeah.
Very well, that's all I had.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Prather, then Henry, then Castalas.
I just wanted to say, I do agree with Bob's assessment on taking some of these one-time expenditures from the fund balance. My issue is, why do we have to hurry and do it now? I mean, we have until next year. I'd like to see how we end the year, what it looks like. I mean, if there's an emergency, yeah, let's do it. But if there's not an emergency, we can go in next year, there's no big difference. At least we have the numbers ahead of, in front of us as to what the percentage is.
Right. All right, thank you.
Mr. Henry? Mr. Castalas?
I'm along the lines of Councilman Graham in the higher fund balance, I'm thinking 15, 16% because Ice Storm many years ago really depleted the fund balance because you've got to cover all those costs before you get reimbursed by the feds. Heaven forbid we get hit like Joplin did. We're going to need the money. And so I'm for a bigger fund balance for those type of emergencies.
Anyone else up to now?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor?
Just as a reminder, from right field, I guess, would be tonight, since we're kind of in baseball mode, I mean, our air conditioning at the police station's going to be 600,000 to almost a million dollars, and that's not, I mean, that's something that we all know about tonight, we've known about it for a while, staff's working to get that done, but as you make these changes and look at that, and that's obviously a capital improvement, so it's something that you might even consider down the road.
Good comment, thank you. Mr. Scribner?
Of course, that 100 and some thousand in that sales tax E and sales tax D, that serves as a fund balance. I mean, it is money that's available to be spent. We're not arguing about spending it, we're just arguing about how you spend it, and, you know, we're not even arguing about that.
Mr. Betts, I think we're back to you.
Okay. I don't have any more questions, I just wanted to, or any more statements, that's the sales tax F. That's our plan from a staff perspective for sales tax F going into next year unless the council would like to change any of it. I will point out that on the fund balance discussion, I have handed these out to the five members of the Finance Committee. I will hand out the other five. I've not been, I've had good intentions of handing them to you, but you'll be able to read them, and I'm also going to the Admin Committee on Wednesday, and we'll be discussing the financial policies there. And then there will be a corresponding bill on Monday's meeting, and part of the financial policies, as was stated earlier, does include the, what we believe the correct fund balance is there, so. Yeah, and this book here is from the GFOA, and it discusses the fund balance. Some people think it's a great read, Mr.?
Wait for the movie.
So based on that, Mr. Chairman, we're, as from staff's perspective, we have presented the entire budget book, so happy to...
Does Mr. Castalas, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. I had to step out during the Parks and Rec thing, I did have a couple of questions there. One, I looked at the admin chargeback on all the enterprise funds, and I thought it was in relation to revenue, and when I talked to Mr. Betts, he says, "No, it's in a relation to expenses." And came back that Parks, if you go as revenue, their admin chargeback would be 12.9%, but it's significantly less than that. Mr. Betts, do you know, could you explain why?
Sure. As far as the admin chargebacks are concerned, we calculate a certain percentage, and for each of the enterprise funds, I think council is aware of how that works. If we were to utilize what it would be for Parks, it would be 12.9%. I don't, we do only charge Parks 5%. The reasoning behind that is, before my time, that's the way it's been since I've been here. Mr. Lockwood might be able to give more input into that.
Yes, I think that was an agreed-upon amount when we put the local park sales tax up for a public vote. We rolled back the property tax and eliminated it. Would also remind you with the passage of that sales tax, the general fund has gained about 1.1 or 1.2 million dollars per year, every year for the last 10 years that was previously going out in the form of a subsidy to the park fund. So you had that on top of the 5%, you need to look at it as a whole. So we felt like that was fair and paid adequately for the services we're getting from the, from the general fund departments.
All right. You have a, Mr. Castalas?
Yes, since Mr. Lockwood brought up about the dedicated sales tax, I had spoke with Mr. Crowell earlier and made him aware of something he was not aware of. And this, and it goes along the lines of what Councilman Prather brought up, the decreased revenues, the tight budgets, all of us aware of, is that in 2010, the city released a citizen survey, and one of the questions in there was during, if the city found itself in a situation where it couldn't continue the level of services going on now, and the response from the citizens were 58% were to reduce services, 24% were to raise taxes, and those that responded to the reduced services, 48% of those had cut Parks and Rec. Well, unless we move that sales tax back into the general fund, there's no way we could ever touch that and help the general fund. So I want other council members to start thinking about, do we want to put back before the voters to move that dedicated sales tax under general fund? Because as this gets tighter and tighter, we may need those funds to just operate.
Thank you, Mr. Castalas. Mr. Betts, are we at a point where we may, we also scheduled tonight at the end of the budget session of this evening, a little presentation on the long-range financial planning?
Yeah, I think the plan from staff's perspective, I could certainly, if you gave me five minutes to have that discussion, but I would prefer to do that on Thursday as the first part, if that would be okay with the committee. Start out the meeting with that particular plan, do a presentation on that. And then the remainder of the meeting could be to discuss the parking lot items from the council's perspective. Just as part of the agenda, since we're kind of discussing that real quick, the next, we'll have the public hearing on the sixth, so next Monday night, there will be a public hearing on the budget. So if the council were to get through and balance the budget and be happy, or the committee, and want to pass it on to the council as a whole by the sixth, after the budget hearing, depending on how that goes, you could certainly pass the budget. If not, the next opportunity to pass the budget would be on October 20th. So, and there are three additional committee meetings scheduled after October 6th, so, and those would be October 9th, October 13th, and October 16th, so.
We've got some additional information we need to calculate, like that subsidy piece that we need to go up.
Right.
And we're scheduled to meet again here Thursday at 5:30, October the 2nd.
Yes, sir. That would be our next meeting.
So we've reached the end of the agenda for tonight?
Correct.
All right. Well, I guess we can entertain a motion. Mr. Henry?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second? Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.